All right, I'll call the special meeting of the Board of Trustees for October 2020 to order. And we'll recognize that all board members are in attendance except Ms. Brown. And she will not be in attendance today. First order of business is an executive session. An executive session for the preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property. With possible action to follow in the open session. 10-minute duration. And the open session will take place online in the virtual meeting room. So I need a motion. From a board member for the executive session. Preliminary discussion of acquisition of real property. Or 10 minutes with possible action to follow.
So moved, Chris Well?
Second.
Second? Okay, been moved in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we'll take a couple of minutes to go into executive session. We're gonna have to move to the location. It'll be just a few minutes.
[music]
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 To go.
Okay, back in the open session. What are recorded because of some technical problems. The executive session actually started at 8:14. And adjourned at 8:24. So. Need a motion, Dr. Mosher. If you could provide some language for a motion, please.
Yeah, so I am seeking a motion from the board to purchase the identified property. From the sellers of Doug Walsh and Jay Dallin. For no more than, well, at the contract price, identified contract price.
Trustee Ash, that would be my motion.
Trustee Chris Well?
Been moved and seconded to approve the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Okay, that's the end of the executive session. And we will now move into presentation, starting with student housing related documents and processes. Dr. Mosher.
Yes, thank you, trustee Daniels. So in email last night, I identified some of the processes that need to take place in our nine o'clock meeting. Just to provide a little additional information and the structure of what we need to do to move forward with student housing. So first, one of the items that we need to do is seek. A sales tax exemption certificate from the unified government. That certificate will allow us and the contractors to purchase materials to build the structure tax-free. So if we did not have that, we would have to pay taxes on the materials. That tax exempt certificate then towards the end of the build allows us to secure industrial revenue bonds. So the industrial revenue bonds are the only bond that we could enter into with tax exempt status. As we are an institution of higher education and this is a housing project. So those are the first two items. So the industrial revenue bonds will get those towards the end of the construction period. We don't need them immediately, so it'll be less than 60 days. And then we will transfer those back with the purchase of special revenue bonds. The special revenue bonds for $20 million are no more than $20 million. Is what we will use as our financial vehicle. And we have a.
Have we gone mute?
Yeah. I think we've lost sound from the folks in Leavenworth.
Yeah. I'll send a chat message.
I just sent one.
Okay, thank you.
To Randy.
Excuse me.
And if we do this internally with the creation of a college 501(c)(3). The makeup of that, we would want to discuss. We talked about. On the college side, Mr. Beach and I, so the CFO and the CEO. And then we would want board representation on that as well. That way, we have a smaller number of people that, and it's more closely held. To make sure that everything runs smoothly. And we could use this entity for the purchase of additional property down the road. If that opportunity arises. So any questions on the process and all the different documents that we have for the nine o'clock meeting? Related to student housing? Yeah, great, thank you.
Dr. Mosher?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, trustee Chris Well here. Could you go back to the portion of the conversation where you had mentioned that we'd want a board member?
Yes, so the composition would be tightly held within the college. The initial thought is the president and the CFO and one board member, one board member. So that we have an odd number. But if the board would like something differently on board representation. Then that would be something that we would want to look into and discuss so that we are meeting the desires of the board.
So is this a committee or what is the name of the entity? I think I'm trying to understand.
The entity is yet to be named. Sometimes it's just a bunch of numbers. We were working in real estate with large organizations purchasing. Property. We would identify a name yet to be agreed upon.
It'd be similar to like the corporations that are set up by KU or K-State to hold their property. It's not any different than other entities that have properties and things of different entities like that.
I'm not hearing whoever is speaking right now.
I think it's Greg.
Evelyn, this was a group that was mentioned in the document Greg sent out yesterday about setting up. Smaller entity 501(c)(3) to deal with this stuff rather than working it through our foundation where there are like. 12 to 15 board members to, which would be pretty unwieldy, so.
I got you.
Yeah. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct, thank you.
Yeah, you guys were, we couldn't hear you for about three or four minutes there. And then you came back in right about that time, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Please let us know if we missed anything then. Yeah. So we would determine the name and it'd be like holding. It wouldn't necessarily be KCKCC, but something like KCKCC, property holding company or something. But it could be numbers, it could be an acronym.
And the way it would be set up is the college or the board would be the membership of the corporation. However it's set up and we can work with it on it just to figure out what that would look like.
Okay.
This is trustee Sutton, can you hear me? Is my mic on? Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
We, is it going to be, you mentioned the whole board is going to be, the whole board or one board member? Because if it's going to be one board member, I would suggest that trustee Chris Well.
Yeah, so the way it would be set up is the membership of the corporation. The entity that owns it would be the college would be represented by the entire board. So the entire board would still be in charge of it. But you would appoint a board to serve as the corporation board, which would be your president, your CFO. And a representative from the college, it could be anybody you guys decide to appoint. That's the theory at least. And if you wanted more than one board member, you could do that. You just wouldn't want more than four because that would then make that a board meeting.
So.
We don't need to make those decisions today. Obviously, as we get into the details of this, the board will have to come back and make decisions as to how many and who. Right now, we're looking at the concept of what that would look like.
Right, so now we're looking just to approve moving forward with creating this holding company?
And before this would be final approval, we've come to review and make sure it's set up the way you guys want it to. Like I said, we've done a draft of the documents and provided the colleges auditor to look at to see if it matches what they think should be done, so.
Okay, good, thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm just making sure that I'm logged on here online so I can share some images for the next topic. The other topic that we have is related to employee benefits. So I want to share. A file with you so you can look at how we came about identifying. Our proposal to the board. So insurance for this year, and I'm sharing a document with you, so you should be able to see that online now, Randy, if you could put that up. We looked very hard at how we can continue to help keep employee insurance costs low for our employees. So we had two options. One would increase our rates by about 7.36%. And then another would be 6.5%. We are looking at doing the one that is a less. The increase is not as large as the first option. But the only way that we can do that without raising rates for our employees. Is to increase the out-of-pocket max from 3,000 to 6,000 to 4,000, 8,000. We did a study of the number of employees who this would affect. Of the about 430. Employees, it would affect 47, so about 10% of our employees who are on the insurance plan. So for 90%, if you look at the charts that I'm showing, it's bringing their costs down. So this option three is in relationship to the cost savings from option one. So you can see especially in these family plans. It is bringing, even though insurance continues to go up, the college is absorbing that so that we can keep the cost low. So our recommendation is to move forward with increasing the out-of-pocket max. You can see the, here, the net increase to the college is $313,000. The college is bearing 94% of that increase. And the employees only 6%. Trying to keep the rate similar and dropping them for our employees. So this keeps us at a total mix of about 89% for the college and 11% for the employees. That's something we've tried to do and not increase that. So I share this with you to. Just to provide some additional information on how the decision was made. And share one more with you. I'm gonna stop sharing this and we can see a comparison. Let's see, hold on one second. I'm gonna cancel out of that in a second. Cancel. I don't want to leave, I just want to not share. Okay, I'm not seeing that. So I can share some of the information verbally with you. Working with technology here. I'm not finding the file all of a sudden. I don't know if it got closed out. But basically, over a three-year period, in some of the plans, we've actually increased the, decreased the employee contribution. As much as 40% over the last three years. The college portion of this continues to increase, but we're really working hard to keep the cost for the employees down. for the employees down. So Christina will have the presentation at the nine o'clock meeting, but I want to provide some background on how we came up with that decision. So I take any questions. I'm sorry, I can't find that other file at this moment.
Any questions for anybody?
Just to refresh my memory, didn't we, you changed the benefits date, didn't you? It used to be, I believe, in July one it started, but now it's on a calendar year? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. So we will move forward with this if approved by the board, so that we can do open enrollment in November and get people signed up. The start of the new plan would be January one.
Another question I'd have, Dr. Mosher. Did the benefits committee, what was their response to this?
Yes, so Christina met with the benefits committee at the end of last week, I believe, or Monday morning. They were pleased to see that the rates go down. There was some conversation about concern with an increased out-of-pocket max, and we understand that. But it affects ten percent of the employees. So in order to not have an increase for our employees, this is, this is our option. So we weighed this very heavily, because I understand how that impact can be held, as it had, you know, multiple surgeries over time. So I, we went, you know, to that out-of-pocket max. So personally, I understand the concern and the questions. But we're trying to keep the cost of insurance down for the most of our employees, ninety percent of our employees. This would be a cost savings.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, move on.
Thank you. Just a quick COVID update, and I'll do one in the nine o'clock session as well. We're still doing very well with the limited number of COVID cases on campus. For example, this last week, we only had two employees and two students that were identified as COVID positive. So in the whole realm of things, that's really good. We're not having institutional spread or virus infection spread on campus, because we are being very diligent about following the rules. We're very strict with the masks, and we have all the hand sanitizer everywhere. Our college police and administration also does walkarounds to see if people are not wearing their masks properly or not physically distanced. In the last two weeks, there had been what I would just call no violations, as from our report, I get a weekly report from college police. So no violations last week, and this one, this week, we had one gentle reminder to lift the mask up over the nose. So that's incredibly impressive to me. So everyone's doing a great job with that. We do have a higher number of close contacts or people being placed on self-isolation because of close contact. So that's our next focus area, is try and communicate to our employees and our students, keep that six-foot distance to help being, to help avoid being identified as a close contact. So that, especially for students, so they're not missing out our class or have to do their work in an online environment. So we're doing real well with that. But I take any questions?
Just a reminder to the board that it's one of our goals for the year, is to monitor the COVID virus. And so Dr. Mosher is going to continue to bring us periodic updates as to how we're doing. Again, as a part of one of our goals for the year. Any questions for Dr. Mosher around that issue? Moving on to capital campaign update?
Just real quickly, things continue to move very well with that. In the nine o'clock meeting, we do have an agenda item to approve a contract for our consultant, who is providing the consulting services for the capital campaign. In those services, hold one second. Let's see, did I find files? Excuse me. Thank you. So what the firm will do, and we did do an RFP at the beginning of this process to select a firm. The firm that we chose was Bern Paloski for multiple reasons. One, they have, they're very well-known in the Kansas City region, and they've worked multiple capital campaigns for schools and organizations in the area, nonprofits. They're also significantly less cost to the college. The other closest competitor that we ended up with the final two, the cost was probably about three times this monthly rate. They would embed someone on the campus to do this work. But as we've learned, we can do this with technology. So Bern Paloski is sometimes on campus, and otherwise, we just meet digitally. But they've really started a great list for approaching potential funders. So they will be providing input on crafting and developing the capital campaign brochure, which we are in the midst of right now. Create a comprehensive local, regional, and state strategy for identifying potential funders for the project. Advise on donor recognitions, and we're looking at naming opportunities for the downtown location. They'll help us with seeking funds with the unified government and the state. We have McIntyre Merchant to do federal work for us. They're also working for us to identify new market tax credits that we can take advantage of and other things. Just they will be, they're the lead consultant for, as we approach this capital campaign. And they have the time to do a lot of the things that a lot, our staff just don't have the time to do. So they're doing a lot of the legwork and putting all the pieces together for the capital campaign. We've been using them for several months, and we're really happy with their results. So we'll have that at nine o'clock. Any questions?
Hearing none. Anything else, Dr. Mosher?
I do not have anything else.
Okay, so I'm going to, as for a motion to adjourn this special session?
Some move. Second.
The movement second, we adjourn the special session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Okay, we have about eight minutes before the regular session of the board starts up. So if you need to take a break, get another cup of coffee or whatever, we'll see you back here in about eight minutes.